Well, thanks, everybody, for getting quiet in advance of the start of the meeting. I don't even have to use the gavel tonight. It's great.
Use the gavel.
Here we go. Just for the pomp and circumstance. Welcome, everybody, to our Board of Education meeting for the month of February? February. Excited to have you all here again with our Students of the Month, hoping to celebrate that in just a minute. I will get some procedural items out of the way with our reading of our open public meetings statement. We'll do the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll get right into our honorees for this evening. So, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies, at which time any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act and Board of Education policy 0162, the Board of Education of the Borough of Bound Brook has caused notice of this meeting to be posted in the board office and at Bound Brook High School and mailed or faxed to the Courier-News Bound Brook Borough Clerk, South Bound Brook Board of Education, and any person who has requested individual notice and paid the required fee. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gorsky, a roll call, please. Certainly. Mr. Bowe.
Here.
Lawson. Ms. Gazino. Ms. Incalcatara. Mr. Zupko. Ms. Musson. Mr. Minhas. Ms. Hi. Mr. Volmer. And Mr. Januzzi. Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. Thank you, Mr. Gorsky. For my comments tonight, I'll be brief and just remind the board members that we're trying to get our self-evaluations done by the end of this month. That's the final checkbox before we can earn our master board certification, so looking forward to that. And we also have the NJSBA. What's the name of that award? Do you remember? Unseen Heroes Award. There you go. The presentation of which will be on, I think, March 3rd. And so, one of our Bound Brook students will be honored there. I hope you all have an opportunity to get out there and join us. This time, I will yield the floor to Dr. Freeman for his superintendent's report.
Well, good afternoon or good evening, everybody, and welcome to our February Board Meeting. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to call Dr. S. up to announce our Students of the Month for Lamont School.
Christian Alaves and Menajar in kindergarten. His teacher is Ms. Cortez. Christians in Mrs. Cortez's class. Christian likes to listen to, read aloud with his teacher. He likes to play tag with his brother. When he grows up, he wants to be a policeman so he can help people. Congratulations, Christian. Congratulations to Stephen Deloche. He is first grade in Ms. Sella and Mrs. Free's class. Ready to come up here, Stephen?
Come on up, Steve. Yes, good job.
Stephen's favorite subject is math. He likes to draw with markers and pencils, and when he grows up, he wants to be a ninja so he can save the city. Amazing. Congratulations, Stephen.
Okay, next up, from Lafayette School, we have Mrs. Caja.
Okay, our second-grade student of the month is Anna Perez Chula. Come on up, Anna. Anna is from Ms. Butragos' class. Her favorite school subject is math. She says it's fun to add and subtract. She loves to draw and dance, and she wants to be a teacher. Congratulations, Anna. Our third-grade student of the month is Samantha Towey. Samantha is in third grade. She's in Ms. Cottle's class. She has a sister, Sophia. Her favorite school subject is also math. She loves to play with her sister, and she also wants to be a teacher. Congratulations, Samantha. Congratulations.
And next up, for Smalley School, we have Mr. Ross. Thank you. I am standing in for Mrs. Winters, and we'll start with the fourth grade. Alejandra Gomez Goxx is a fourth-grade student of the month. Come on down. Woo-hoo! She's in Ms. Semper's class. She has one younger sister. Your favorite subject is science. And her hobbies: resting and drawing. And she wants to be an astronomer or an actress. Astronomer, absolutely. Thank you. So, our fifth-grade student of the month is Sammy Morales Moroz. Fifth grade with Ms. Hodges. She favorite subject is math. That's good. That's a good thing. And your hobby is solving math problems, and your career is going to be in the legal studies or law. Nicely done. Congratulations. And for sixth grade, we have Sadie Puga. There you are. So, you have multiple siblings, one brother, two sisters, yes? Your favorite subject is math as well. Touche. Your hobbies are hanging out with your family and your cousins, and you're going to be a teacher. Congratulations. There you go. Well done. Beautiful nails. Congratulations. Congratulations, men. Well done. And next up for Community Middle School, Dr. Santa Serra.
Hello, everyone. First up for the Community Middle School is Daisy Morales. Daisy was nominated by her teachers, Ms. Amandora and Mr. Jester. Daisy has two siblings, Karina and Jessie. Favorite subject in school is gym class and art. Likes to sing and enjoys hanging out with friends. And when Daisy grows up, would like to be a singer and possibly own her own makeup business. Congratulations. Next up for the Community Middle School, Chanette Brown. Chanette was nominated by her teacher, Mr. Crowley, and I'll have to say this, Chanette, I embarrassed you a little bit. Chanette was relatively new to Mr. Crowley's class and made such an impact, he couldn't say enough good things about you today, so I wanted to point that out. Chanette has siblings. Are Aleah, Ebony, Lynette, Angel, Michaela, and Jasmine. Favorite subjects are ELA and math. Favorite hobby is exercising. And when she grows up, she wants to be either a math or an ELA teacher, so I'm looking forward to that.
Last but certainly not least, from BBHS, we have Mrs. Larson.
Thank you. Our first Crusader of the Month is Carter Arias. Carter has four siblings. His favorite subject in school is phys ed. His favorite hobbies are skating, fashion, wrestling, and eating. And his undecided at the moment as his future career plans, but we still have a couple of years to help him figure that out. So, congratulations, Carter. Our next Crusader of the Month is Stephanie Romales. Stephanie has an older brother, Jason, and a younger brother, Jonathan. Her favorite subject in school is history. Her favorite hobby is listening to music, and when she grows up, she would like to be a dentist. Our third Crusader of the Month is Caesar Tovar. Caesar has one sister. His favorite subject in school is crafts. His favorite hobby is playing soccer. And when he grows up, he would like to be a digital game designer. And our final Crusader of the Month is Chelsea Arroyo Fernandez. Chelsea was doing ESL testing today, so I have to read her answers off of my phone. She messaged me to them. But she has two sisters. Her favorite subjects in school are anything having to do with art and environmental science. Her favorite hobbies are reading books and watching movies, and when she grows up, she would like to be a psychologist.
Okay, congratulations to all of our Students of the Month. Give them a round of applause. Let's also have a round of applause for their parents, because they wouldn't be doing as well as they are without you. Okay, at this time, with all the Students of the Month and their families, come up to the stage to take a group picture. I don't like that word either, but state-mandated thing, it is what it is.
And just for you, this happened literally right after COVID, so it's 22-23 data. Okay, so remember 2021, it was hybrid, 22-23, it was our first year back.
So, when we review the corrective action plan for the chronic absenteeism, we're thinking pre-K3, which wasn't a pre-K3 program. It was really special ed at that point. Right now, it's a pre-K3, pre-K4, and kindergarten. So, again, I did some research on data with schools around, looked at 18 other schools, and chronic absenteeism for this age group is a common scenario. Why PK3 is new, right? It's only started within the past few years.
Last year was a first year, so yeah.
Right, so with that, we'll see how it evolves in, you know, coaching parents up into looking at these environments as something more than a daycare environment, where you can be a little bit more laxative. So, here we go. Diving into... Is this working? All right. There? What's going on? I pushed it. Oh, on the side. So, that's, yeah, we need to give the mic some combat pay. All right, so with this, so the state, you know, reaches out to us and says, well, why do we need a corrective action plan? Because, you know, if students are missing more than 10% of the school year, which averages out to about 18 days, is when things become, you know, chronic, because there's 180 school days, 10%. days, 10%, 18%. So this is something where it's going to be reviewed, you know, starting now, we'll do a mid-year slash six-month review, two-month review, we'll be continually reviewing it, and then we will come back to the goal of reducing absenteeism to below that 10% mark or at that 10% mark. So here. It was glowing, but now it's not. I think our batteries, it did go. Oh. Okay. So here we are. All right, so our key stakeholders is, of course, the principal, who's going to lead the implementation of this process, the counselor. So we have a counselor at the school who can work with the parents. It's really more of a parent issue than it is with a student issue. You can't really sit there and talk to a three-year-old about, you know, needing to get to school on time. So it's about a communication process with parents and how we support families in understanding, you know, what's going on with the research-based pre-K3, pre-K4, and kindergarten. The nurse will, you know, try to address medical-related absences and try to get people to understand that an absence is an absence with the state. So even if you're out because you are sick, you still need to be back as soon as possible because an absence is an absence for the state. So there is no excused absences minus the five conditions, like you're going to, what is it, child, take your child, there's five legal reasons you can be out. Not related to being sick, not related to just not showing up. So for us, the nurse does a good job of conveying to parents that if you're out sick, you need to make sure you're well, but come back as soon as possible because an absence is an absence is an absence. And then the secretary does track the attendance, and she does very much, you know, is brimage, does a great job of communicating with the family and helping them to take a look at their number of absences and understand where they are in the process. So where we were, the specific places where we did not meet, so we met the absenteeism numbers in some areas, but in specific areas, like Hispanic students, economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, and English learners, those were the ones where we saw the most issues, right? So the groups that have higher rates than 24.3 because of post-COVID rules regarding student health, so here's part of the issue, for that school year, you could keep your student, or you were, by the CDC, suggested to keep your child home for five days. That creates an issue for us because you get to 18 very quickly if you get COVID more than once. So that's a factor for this year of the 22, 23. Then, like we were mentioning, working with parents in that pre-K3, pre-K4, that it's not a daycare we have, and we're working with research-based curriculum that needs continuity for attendance to grow, to progress, and the other piece for us is reinforcing that this program is more consistent rather than just a daycare environment. So the next piece for us, so what we did is, in order to identify at-risk students, is they become an issue at 19 days out, but you still have to monitor that 1 to 19, right? So when you get those students who are moving from 1 to 10, you start to have conversations. You'll see when Pollard speaks that you'll look at when do we start to send out letters and how do we remediate? So we use Genesis to track the absenteeism. We can pull it by gender, grade, and economic status so that we can know where those subgroups are. And then we're looking at targeted interventions, really that 1 to 19, because once you hit 19, you're going beyond that 10%. And then we start to focus on the 20 to 30, because as you'll see in the numbers, that's kind of the sweet spot where a lot of students end up for some odd reason, and then the 30-plus day is a little smaller ratio of students. So you're not getting a lot of students who are out 30-plus. You're seeing the biggest numbers of 20 to 29 days. So that's something that we want to pay attention to. So those were intentional blocks. So here it is, we were looking at breakdowns with the male students with economically advantage and the Hispanic students. So these are some subgroups that we're working on now from this reflection. These are related to the 22, 23 year where we were looking at those students. So 19 days, you can see, tends to be a smaller number of students. That's the ones who are just getting beyond the 10%. So not a lot of students who are at that. Then we start to get into the big numbers. It's that 20 to 29 days is where students tend to be missing a lot, and that's important for us to know. So you can see for me, both with economically disadvantaged, 14 and 14 at the 20 to 29 days, and then with our Hispanic students, we're also looking at 15 and 13 for 20 to 29 days. So there is a system of parental notification, you know, conferences, reviewing doctor's notes, and working with other paperwork. Let's see if that changes. So here are the tiers of intervention that Dr. S has worked.
So for tier one, we started in newsletter. So our monthly newsletter includes a blurb about the importance of attendance. We also are, obviously, we provide daily free breakfasts to encourage school arrival. I think we need to purchase some bacon, maybe the smell of bacon. All right, and then during back-to-school night, we also discuss the importance of attendance. Our corrective action plan, part of our current strategies for tier two and three is to make sure that we meet with the families to discuss the attendance issues. So after the fifth absence or the 10th, we're constantly meeting with the parents. It's a lot of conversation, sometimes it's a little therapy of them really understanding that the habits they're creating are lifelong. I think, Dr. Freeman, you mentioned a research article about students who have absentee rates that are really high in early elementary and high school, they also tend to continue that pattern. So we're trying just to break these bad habits and realize that it's important that they're in school daily. We also, our last resort would be take legal action. We've never done that in the preschool program, but it's just important that we connect with the families, that we also, just anytime they meet with me, I print out their Genesis reports that they're aware of how many absences a child has, and then just continue to follow up. Oh, there you go. Got it. All right, so some challenges that some of the parents share is transportation. So if some of the families are living on like a mountain avenue, and sometimes it's challenging for them to walk to the Lamont Annex or the Lamont Building, they don't have the reliable transportation, they can't afford J. Perez, so that's been a challenge for some of our families, especially with cold weather. So we just try to work with them in terms of trying to figure out alternatives for them to make sure that their child is in school on time. Some of it, a lot of it's medical. I mean, we've passed two months, it's been a struggle in terms of flu, stomach bug, COVID again, things like that. So naturally, these students have to stay home just so that we don't spread the germs. The one big thing is the vacation, sometimes families just want to take vacation, extended vacations. So sometimes they are two, three, four weeks. At that point, especially with pre-K, we automatically withdrew the students once they hit the 10-day mark, and then because we have a waitlist, we're able to provide their space to, there's slot to another family. But I'm very clear in our orientation for the families, we make it clear to make sure that with vacations, that they're being mindful of that 10-day mark, you don't want to go over that, et cetera. And then a lot of our preschool parents don't value, they don't see, they see pre-K as a daycare, so we have to kind of change that mindset, and that's part of our parent orientation that we're having next week, just to kind of inform the families of the importance of a preschool education, the importance of being in school, being on time.
So I think we're starting the conversation, is what we're doing, and that conversation needs to be happening not only here, but in other districts as well. You see that there. So a school-wide campaign to stress the importance of attendance, and that's like Dr. S was saying, figuring out with parents that this is a research-based program, that it's not a daycare where you can come in and out on a different day and just not be there. So I know that they're also working with individual attendance plans for students, right? That's been a key factor. So I'll let Dr. S speak to that in a second, and parent workshops that they're having, and then this flexible learning options. So individual attendance plans and flexible learning options.
Yeah, so we use a linket. Linket now has beautiful, like, just crafts and charts to show the parents, there's green, red, and yellow. Red, obviously, is, you know, the attendance is getting to a point where we have to take corrective action. So it's just a way for parents to really realize the attendance is important, and it's where we have individual attendance meeting plans for each parent, and we don't include the students, they're a little too young, and just keep explaining the importance of attendance. So having these meetings is helpful, it's, includes a guidance counselor myself, and depending if it's a medical issue, we also include the nurse.
I think you even will set up flexible time schedules sometimes for students in order for them to get there. So that's, I think, a key element, is that setting up flexible time schedules with the parents to support the student, to grow them into the process of school is important because, like Dr. S said, is that culture of coming to school can stay with you for a lifetime. So let's instill that, hey, we want, we need you, we want you to need it, we need you to understand it. So what we're going to do is start tracking absenteeism rates monthly, that's something we're looking at district-wide, and that's coming soon. As far as my concern is, looking at that data more for every school building and helping out Dr. S with that as well. Then breaking it up by the subgroups so that we're paying attention to those groups where we don't meet, because some of our groups, like female students, we do meet, you know, our chronic absenteeism numbers. So we will highlight the specific groups and do something targeted. We'll assess the strategies that's going on, the conversations we're having, and then we will definitely have progress reports shared out with the board to say where we are with these processes. And then, there we go. So our goal would be to do a mid-year check, and a mid-year check will be from now, moving into a few months, to see where we are and what we're doing, because this is something that's really just started since January 30th was the timeline of beginning it. We'll adjust, refine, because it's a living process, we're talking about people, not widgets. And then we will figure out, you know, what we've set up with the various actions, have they created any change? And then the goal is to just get below that 10% mark. Technically, you can be slightly above 10% and still meet chronic absenteeism, so I'm looking at that data as well to see, you know, you can be anywhere from 10 to 16% above. So that's important, but we really want to target to that 10% number what the state is looking at, and that's the goal. Total per grade? Oh, and the whole program, so for that year, we were looking at about 128. Yeah. You're looking at like 40? Yeah, and again, so it's different subgroups as well, so it's, it's important for us to understand that, right, subgroup based on the Hispanic, so there may be more students who are Hispanic or less, there may be male versus female, and then also, you know, looking at socially economically disadvantaged groups. So within those groups, that's where we get the percentages from. Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So what you're saying is if, you know, it's hard for, sometimes if you can't afford to go to the doctor, you're going to be sicker longer. And we actually, so you touched, we did, so.
So we had this conversation earlier about that. We just really try to help the families. I mean, if you have a medically excuse, it's not an absence, it's just verified, it's not, it's not considered.
It still counts as an absence towards this state reporting data, so there's the issue. To the state, an absence is an absence is an absence. It's good for us to know that it's a medical issue and that we're aware and we're supporting the student that way. The other part that you're mentioning is with, so, you know, with economically disadvantaged, we were just discussing that, I feel like when a parent is holding back their child from going to a doctor because they don't have insurance and that costs, so you could extend the student being sick because they're not getting proper medicine, and, you know, then pass it to the next person, and so that's real, that's part of the conversation that we're having in supporting that subgroup. To the state, in the reporting data, so that's when we hit that, so if you hit 18, you could be sick legitimately with something tragic. We have to report this to the state. Yes, they do. No. No. Yep. Right, so there's the other part of this that's. So that was another conversation that we were having with this chief academic officer just before this, is discussing the fact that PK3, PK4, and kindergarten are not required legally to be there. However, it's her insight, Robyn's insights, were that state money is still being doled out, so the state wants to know that you're there more than, say, five days. They don't want to be paying per student when the kid shows up 20 days out of 180. So I get that. So that's the issue that we're managing here is, again, it isn't a state requirement to attend by law, ironically enough, but we're still measured by it for our ratio because an absence is an absence is an absence, and then that's where we get into an issue. So, yeah, we were just having that same conversation as well today. Yeah. Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah. Stack up. Right. 24. Right, that's not our entire district.
And that was in 22, 23, right after, you know, hybrid learning and all of that. We had to count all of that, especially with the five days, students had to stay home. For this school year, yes.
Yes. Yes, so I was looking at 18, like I said, when we were talking today in preparation, I was looking at 18 other districts just around, and a lot of the districts meet the, you know, chronic absenteeism in pre-K, say, female, but they don't in Hispanic, they don't in economically districts. So I'm looking at South Brunswick in, in Middlesex, I'm looking at, you know, other places in Somerset, and when we do, that's why that number of 24% for these grade levels are there.
After 10 days, they're automatically dropped.
So that's a big consideration that we were talking to, to mention, having a discussion with Dr. Freeman on the side of, look, when we hit that 10-day, we were talking about, we have to disenroll and there's a waitlist. And so a lot of districts I know will be like, so for me, working with South Brunswick, because my wife's there, it's one of those things where there's a lot of people who will go back to their country for a month, and guess what? Sorry, you're in pre-K, we have a waiting list, you're going to have to, at 10 days, we're going to have to sacrifice your, your child. You've made that choice. So. Yes. Okay. So that's something, that's something we'll leave to the, yes, we'll, we'll leave that to the past, yes, ideally. Yes. 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 So that's where.
Yeah, we're doing better. I mean, just, I mean, I was just looking at the report last week, there are no really concerns. I mean, we have a few outliers, but nothing that I'm just like, oh, we're going to be doing it now. Pretty confident that we will have this corrective action plan for what is a year, and then we will.
Yeah, I'm. Yes, that was, they, they were pulling from the most recent school performance report card, which is that.
No, they're automatically registered, but are you saying if they're, if? No, they're just automatically.
Like a pre-K three kid doesn't, you know, is absent 30% of the year, and we say, you know, you're out.
Yes. It's like now, like, it's, we have a waitlist, which is, you know, for students, it's, it's once out a lot.
Yeah, we didn't break that, I didn't break down the med, so. It's hard to know. Medically.
Or during COVID, they would take, they either do the virtual learning, they were in Costa Rica, or, you know, whatever, and then, you know, they're supposed to be enrolled, you know, so there's a lot, yeah. During that time was just, so that's why it's 22, 23, just to understand that that's the data. We just had so many restrictions during that time.
But that did lead to confusion because sometimes parents would think medically verified meant excused. So that was a confusion with parents that we worked on with our letter last year to the parents to change that, to make sure that they understood that it still counts as an absence, just because it says medically excused, that's part of the issue for us. It still counts as an absence for us. So we had to convey that to the parents. Right. So that's the. Right. So we changed that terminology, so what you, if we were to run it, it'd be medically verified now. So we changed it from excused to verified. Yeah. So we had this conversation last year, we changed it to medically verified. Is excused. These many excused. Yeah. Right. Right. Yes. So we, we, we had that conversation about verified. And to your point, yes, so we're using link it right now to get the current data. We're going to start monitoring more on a monthly basis, and then that's what we'll be looking to report with the board, and I will be certainly supporting Dr. S in, in getting that data to her and reviewing where they are, because I'm looking at it right now. And our numbers in the twenties is only about eight people. So I went, which is a good thing, but that's, again, you know, when we look at our numbers, 16 was kind of the average for that 20 to 25. So we need to start having those conversations with students right around those dates. Yes. Not, okay, so there's, it's the families, we're not talking to the students. We're a little, yes, yes. We're, we're coaching up parents, and it is an important element to it, I think, and that's, I think, which is statewide, that you're really coaching up parents on how to appreciate, you know, pre-K three and pre-K four as a structured curriculum, you know, it has structured play, it has structured socialization, and really reinforcing that with them is important.
I don't know.
No, I mean, I, I don't know that we could, that's something we could review. Like Paula was saying, you know, this seems to be from the article Dr. Freeman was mentioning, it seems to carry on from the younger years moving forward. So that's data we can certainly review for sure. The report card may change, the standards-based report card, you're getting more feedback with it, and it seems a little bit more scary, maybe, I don't know. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I will put that there. That's a good question. We keep getting caps. Cap over and over. Right. Absolutely.
All right, everybody, we are up to item number three, our student board member report.
Hello? So for our sports news, on a good note, boys' basketball currently has a record of 12 to 13 with their sectional match on February 26 at home. The team is currently seeded eighth out of 16 teams in Group One. Senior Jackson Morrison sets a new Bam Brook Boys Basketball all-time leading scorer with 1,562 points scored throughout his high school career. Moving on to girls' basketball, they currently have a record of 16 to six, with their next game being February 20 against Old Bridge at 5:00 PM. The girls' basketball team also is locked in as the number three seed for the upcoming NJ SIAA State Tournament, versing Florence on February 26 at home. Wrestling currently has a record of seven to 16, with their senior night being against North Plainfield on February 14. The girls' wrestling team came in at 12th place at the Skyland Conference Tournament on February 13. Wrestling will also have a varsity districts competition on the 22nd of February, followed by the girls' varsity regionals on the 23rd of February. They will also have a varsity regionals competition on the 28th of February. Moving on to track and field, track and field competed at Tom's River for two meets, one of which being the Somerset County Championship on February 2nd with multiple medalists. Their second meet was sectionals on February 8th, where they once again had multiple medalists, one of them being Allison Cespedes in the 1600 meter, Allison Cespedes, Kylie Gionato, Emmy Wilson, and Di Monte Krevikate in the 4x400 meter, and Ogden Malik and Povalt. They'll move on to Group One State Competition on the 23rd of February. If anyone places on the varsity groups meet on the 23rd, they will move on to compete at Meet of Champions on March 2nd. And moving on to school news, many of the class of 2026 are hearing back from colleges through early action decisions with acceptances from the University of Miami, Rutgers, Monmouth, University of Maryland, TCNJ, ESU, and many, many more. Bam Brook hosted the first-ever professional development day for student representatives with six different schools showing up, including Bam Brook, North Plainfield, Ridge, Somerville, Hillsborough, and Mandeville. Each school had one to two student representatives for a total of nine. It was very successful, and students were able to network with other representatives and learn a lot from the presentation that the NJ SBA provided. Overall, lots of positive feedback from other representatives. Moving on to the academic league, they will compete tomorrow for their eighth and ninth matches, and it will be their final matches here at the high school against Gale St. Bernard's and Wachong High School. Moving on to drama club, the Bam Brook High School Drama Club has announced that they will be performing the play A Chorus Line on May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th with a confirmed cast list. The BBH Drama Club also performed a winter band concert on February 5th in the auditorium, featuring high school, the high school band, the middle school band, junior Carly Morales as a soloist, and underclassman Luis Correo as, also as a soloist. And that's it.
Very good, Harrison. Any comments or questions for Mr. Musson? All right. Thank you for that great report. We are on to committee meeting reports. We'll start with education, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you. We met recently. One of our board and district goals this year that was developed after the strategic planning session was to expand the number of course offerings that we offer as a district. So we were excited to review a number of proposals for new courses. Some of them are in partnership with Ritten Valley College. There's an aseptic cleaning or cleansing program that we're very excited about, lots of real-world applications there. There's great programming coming up that relates to Spanish programs for students who already speak Spanish at home. We're excited about some of the ideas for different robotics electives. So these are classes that will directly engage our community, our students, we think they'll be of high interest. The committee also noted that these are classes that teachers themselves worked with their administrators, Mrs. Griffin, Mr. Ross, to put together. So I think the, the staff are enjoying the, the ability to be creative and come up with new ideas and enhance our programming that they think will not only be interesting to teach, but also that kids will find value in, and that will reflect things that our community can be excited about, all while we work to meet that goal. So it's a very exciting meeting, good things coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Any questions or comments regarding education committee? Yes, Don?
I, on Sunday afternoon, I took a walk around the town, I ran into, but not quite literally, ran into Bethany Wagner, and she said that she presented the proposal for a protocol platform. I think it's a community exercise program, if I understood it correctly. And she said she made a proposal and hasn't heard anything back. So I just wondered if anything has been done.
We'll look into that with Dr. Freeman. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you again, Mr. Dawson. We are on to governance, Mr. Bauer.
Okay. We spent the majority of our committee meeting looking at those policies. I had mentioned last month where we needed to first get a hold of what our current policies are, and then see where we're, how we can move forward. The first one was AI and how we're going to deal with that going forward. We had Nick in virtually to kind of advise us. He's going to be our AI coordinator. He recommends that we form a committee of teachers and administrators. They're going to have to look at myriad things. Honestly, there are so many angles to look at with AI, and it's so new and, and growing so quickly, that it's probably something that's going to have to meet quite a bit to figure things out. They will eventually also have to train the rest of the staff on proper use, on what's allowed and what's not. So hopefully, that committee can get kicked off before the end of this school year, but more to come for sure. Kind of tangentially related, while we had Nick, he also is officially recommending that we go with Parent Square in place of Class Dojo. Interestingly, Nick, the very next day I walked into school to an email from our IT department in Piscataway, who said they're going with Parent Square. So it was within 12 hours, I had heard about it twice in two different districts. And they cited the exact same reasons you did, by the way. And they cited the exact same reasons you did, by the way. We also discussed, there's a policy that we are allowed to decide on non-resident teachers, non-resident teachers' children, whether we accept them as students in our district. We currently do not allow them as students in our district, and we recommend that we continue that mostly based on the fact that we have some space issues that continue to be a problem. So at this time, we're recommending that we continue the current policy. Don't, I'm sure many of you have seen that there is quite a debate out there right now, especially in New Jersey, about cellphone use and limits. That policy was also up. And right now, students are allowed to have them, but they should be away and turned off. Just today, actually, our governor posted on his Facebook page that he is budgeting $3 million to help school districts come up with their own policies on probably doing away with cellphones in schools. That was on his Facebook page. He was in a district in South Jersey this morning. They had the pouches, and he was talking about that. So we will see what comes of that. That's probably coming down pretty soon from the state. We don't know. And the last one that we had to circle back to from last month was our policy on academic integrity. Currently, the choice was between having a district-wide policy and school-to-school policies. We currently have a district-wide policy. Right now, administrators and parents are contacted if there is a problem, and normally, zero credit is given for an assignment. However, for more serious infractions, and they listed plagiarism of a research paper, a failing grade for the course can be given. I suspect that that doesn't happen very often, but that is possible under our policy. So that's what it says right now. Other than that, the only other thing that we brought up quickly was we had talked about, and I know this had been discussed here as well, the executive order on immigration and how attendance had been affected by that. Good news, attendance since that initial downturn has picked up quite a bit. Obviously, the fear does still exist, but Dr. Freeman is working with some organizations, hopefully to come in and train parents on their immigration rights. Students have been told that we're not sharing their information, that we don't give access to schools, so we are trying to keep them safe and make them feel safe. So we, as a board, you also received a copy of the directive that was sent to teachers and administrators, I believe, in the January 31 weekend confidential. So if you want the exact letter that went out, you can see it there as well. And other than that, we did spend 10 minutes looking at our committee's charge and just reviewed that really quickly. I think that's everything.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. Bow on governance? That was a lot.
Sorry, that was a lot.
It's good. All right, hearing none. Let's move on to human resources. Mrs. Hi.
Mine is pretty short. You know, every, we always start every week or every month with looking at the positions that are open in the district. So just looking at them and filling positions, et cetera. And, you know, the principals are continuing to observations, et cetera, and working with all the teachers, you know, and just offering their expertise. One of the things, the staff did have a prudential disability presentation, and this is a separate insurance that they can take out at their own expense. You know, we'll say Aflac, and then I won't be able to get it out of my mind for three days now. But that was to them, and it really is something worth looking into. And the only other thing on our agenda this month was just looking at an assistant superintendent position and really looking at what the job description would be, and that will be posted soon.
Thank you, Mrs. Hi. Any comments or questions for human resources? All right. Moving on to operations, Mr. Zupko.
Okay, so operations was pretty financially involved. We had a budget update. The committee on the budget process where all district departments and schools were now submitted and entered their budgets regarding tuition revenue in '25-'26. Mr. Gorski presented to the committee the recently released certified tuition rates for '630-24 and '630-23. Additionally, he noted that after ADE was calculated for '23-'24 school year and when using the certified rates, South Bound Brook's tuition paid to the '23-'24 budget was understated by approximately $610,000. $610,479, because I know I want to get that right, Mr. Gorski. That'll carry over to '25-'26 budget and add to the base tuition estimate. It'd be $2,824,327. So the total tuition charged for '25-'26 is $3,434,806. Mr. Gorski stated that it appears that this adjustment is an anomaly due to significant budget underpayment in '23-'24, and he believes more accurate estimates for budgeted tuition were agreed to in subsequent years by South Bound Brook. Now we go on. Dr. Freeman and Mr. Gorski updated the on the meeting that transpired that morning between South Bound Brook and Bound Brook administrators. South, you know what, Mr. Gorski, I could read this, but do you want to give your spin on it before I read the rest of it?
Thank you, Mr. Zupko. We had a wonderful initial meeting with representatives of the board and administration from South Bound Brook in an attempt to develop shared services and interests where the two districts can cooperate and hopefully create some financial efficiencies going forward. And that was the gist of the meeting, and just goal-setting for future meetings.
Thanks, Mr. Gorski. So basically, talking about that meeting, South Bound Brook, the meeting was held, and there were two requests to make the tuition and adjustment less difficult on South Bound Brook budget and the potential needs to cut South Bound Brook's K to A program. First was a request to split the adjustment of $610,479 into two payments spanning two budget years, '25-'26 and '26-'27. The second was to consider an alternative tuition calculation method shared by a few sending and receiving districts. Specifically, a hypothetical agreement would span five years and would increase by a fixed percentage each year, like 2% to 3%, and there would be no adjustment calculated or owed from one district to the other. After the five years, the performance of the agreement would be reviewed, and the percentage of increase would be adjusted. The risk to one district or the other, if the estimated tuition rate differs significantly from the actual, there would be a financial disadvantage to said district. The committee was warm to the first request to spread the current adjustment over two years. If budget revenues and state aids warrant, however, we were much less warm to the second request. And the caveat being that this, that meeting was very professional. It was held, and the committee was very happy that our administrative team and the South Bound Brook administrative team were able to discuss things. And I know that, you know, discussions are still going to be ongoing, but we, the committee, wanted to thank both administrative teams for professionalism and dealing with sensitive subjects such as this. That's the end, Mr. President, of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Zupko. Any comments or questions on operations committee?
Somewhat unrelated. I just noticed with the storms that we've had over the last week with the high winds, I noticed the flag at Lafayette School is pretty well tattered. Is that something the operations committee is responsible for, replace flags? Or do we let that be known to?
I think the superintendent is responsible. He'll take care of it.
Well said. Any other questions on committee business for operations? All right, we are moving on to Somerset County Educational Services Commission. Mrs. Hi, back to you.
Okay, this is a little bit busier than HR. They had, at their last meeting, they had their Teacher of the Year presentation, which was very nice, just recognizing and really listing, you know, what accomplishments these teachers have made with the students. The superintendent has just started a lunch reward program. Keeping in mind that these are very involved students. These are the kids who are sent from all different districts because they're not able to make it in their districts. So they're over at ESC, and they're, you know, there were nine students who had lunch, or excuse me, breakfast with the superintendent, and it was for improved grades, for improved attendance, you know, showing kindness towards another student, et cetera. So it was very well received, and the superintendent is going to continue with that. There was also a presentation on the budget for the upcoming school year. And, you know, with Somerset County ESC, they don't receive any federal funds, any state. They get their, their budget is based on tuition, et cetera, and transportation. There was an administrative reorganization. There was the assistant superintendent slash principal position, which was eliminated. And now there were two principals and two vice principals in the school. And I'll tell you, they had 180 applicants for these two positions. And they have the people who are now serving as the principals, they'll be starting April 1. It was really interesting. The one is a PhD, has an LDTC certification, a special ed certification, elementary certification, a learning consultant, and this person was from Chatham. The second person, the second principal, a BA in marketing, teacher of the handicapped, an LDTC, learning consultant, supervisor of special ed, and the supervisor of child study team for Monmouth County. So these are, you know, very qualified people who are, and just meeting with them afterwards, very excited about taking the positions. And the last was really updating policy, and it is just what we do here. We look at what the mandated policies are and look at anything that just needs to be updated. And that is all.
That is all? That's enough? Thank you for the report, Sue. Any questions related to SC ESC? All right, before we wrap it up, let me just acknowledge we will skip the South Bound Brook Board report tonight as Mr. Inkaw Ketero could not join us. So I will entertain any final comments regarding committees or work. Otherwise, I will just say thank you again for another month of job well done. It seems like very meaningful discussions occurred in each of the committee meetings, and we're continuing to make progress. So thank you both to the board members and to our administrative counterparts who make those meetings very productive. At this point, we'll move on to item 5.1, which is open to the public for agenda items only. Oh, yeah. So unless we know that he was here to make a comment regarding the agenda, yeah. Yeah. Understood. So I think we can close this item for the time being. And if he has any comments, agenda or otherwise, we can, oh, here he is. We eagerly awaited your return, sir. So we are currently open, the floor is open for comments, public comments on agenda items, if you're interested? Yeah? Yeah? And I just wanted to acknowledge that this is the portion of the meeting that's related to agenda items. So if you're making a comment on an agenda item, that's great. If it's an open topic that you would just like to address the board about, that we'll get to a little bit later on in the agenda.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, I just, is it okay if we take the comment regardless of what it is at this point?
So have you looked at the agenda?
Yeah, a little bit.
Is it, is the item that you're going to speak about on the agenda?
No.
Okay.
So in that case, we'll just ask you to be patient with us for a few more minutes. We're going to move some of our business, and then a little bit later in the agenda, we'll have an open opportunity for you to speak.
That's fine.
Great. Thank you. All right, with that, we are up to item 6.1. Be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves the minutes for the following meetings, regular and executive meeting minutes for January 30, 2025. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bow, a second. Thank you, Mr. Minhas. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We will now move to item 6.2. Be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves the minutes for the following meetings. This is the special board meeting minutes of February 3, 2025. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bow, a second. Thank you, Mr. Zupko. Any discussion?
This is the training, right?
Correct. This was our training meeting. That's okay. All right, hearing none. Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item 7.1. Be it resolved that the superintendent recommends for approval the resolutions as outlined in district personnel resolutions. These are items 7.2 through 7.28. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bow, a second. Thank you, Mrs. Hi. Any discussion?
Yes, and it's based on whether or not they make it to that level. But they put it on this agenda because the tournament will be, yeah. Mr. Gorski?
The motion in aggregate is capped at $4,500. However, the board policy limits each participant to a $1,000 reimbursement. It's not expected to exceed $1,000 per person. All right, any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Please.
This is in regards to the coaches lined up. Does anyone know if the student athletes may get to the tournament? Does the district have any plans of supporting the students in their travels? Or how is that set up?
Is this also for 7.11?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
When you say, when you say support, what do you mean?
Hotels or going and traveling to the tournament itself or admission into the tournament? I don't know if there's a fee to pay.
Whatever is needed for them to enter and to stay, that would be provided.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item 8.1. Be it resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education approves the resolutions as outlined in district education resolutions. These are items 8.2 through 8.14. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Dawson, a second. Thank you, Ms. Musson. Any discussion? The radiators apparently are talking to us, but besides that. All right, Mr. Gorski, a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Up to item 9.1. Be it resolved, the Bound Brook Board of Education approves the resolutions as outlined in board action resolutions. These are items 9.2 through 9.12. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Gudzino, a second. Thank you, Mrs. Hi. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, Mr. Gorski, a roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We are now up to other matters to come before the board, which I have not received any. New business from any board members that would like to raise any topics that weren't on tonight's agenda? Going once, going twice. All right. So, now we are open to the public for discussion, and this is for any items. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda. My only request is based on our policy, district policy 0167, public participation in board meetings, that members of the public sign in at the podium and provide their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. And, that's not right. Each participant is allowed three to five minutes to speak, and no individual may address the same topic more than once until all others wishing to speak have had the opportunity to do so. And with that, you're good, you're good. It's confusing to me too, by the way.
My name is Sam.
Yep.
My company's name, KGB Sports. And in a great explanation, I, I kind of took the liberty of writing Mr. Freeman a letter following up on an issue that came up last year. And I also wrote, I think, I tried to send to all the board members last week as well to kind of looking for some sympathy toward what happened. So, basically, I think I didn't miss the president and then another lady because the email didn't go through. So, I didn't know how to resolve it, other than, you know what, I got extra copies, see if you need to, then I want to follow it. So, the, the problem that I'm facing as a small businessman, I live here in Middlesex, been doing business now with schools for 20 some years now. I deal with Bridgewater, Bound, you know, Manville, Middlesex, Piscataway. So, I've done business with the schools. So, what happened? Jeffrey Steele kind of approached me. He wanted a basketball backstop replaced, wall pad replaced. I said, oh, great, you know, Bound Brook, right next door. I'll come right over and I'll do the work. And then along the same line, Senator Soma was also connected with me that I went to the middle school to do, submit for the wall pads and all, and that started back in last January. I submitted a quote, I went and did site check, I went to all the due diligence, I submitted a quote, and then in July, say, Sam, we're going with you. Here's the PO. So, PO were issued, and then the kind of not dire pressure, but the pressure was to say, hey, let's, we want to get it before the basketball season. So, I did my due diligence as a professional, as I think I am. I go off speed. The PO was actually issued. I have a timeline, but I might have the timeline, it makes, but sometime in July, August, the PO came. So, I got to work communicating with Mr. Senator Soma, the AD Jeffrey Steele. As a matter of fact, somewhere between July and August, Mr. Freeman also, we were picking out colors of the, the backstops, the beams, the logo of the stage pads for middle school, all these coordinating things. And then on the delivery, the wall pad was coming sooner, so the wall pad was going to deliver sometime in August. And right around the time, I was working with Noberto Molino, he's the grounds guy. I was told to deal with him because he handles that part of it. And I, I, we were informing him, oh, the wall pads are done, it's delivering. I'm ready to install it. They're shipping in, you know, arriving tomorrow. Can you coordinate a receipt? And two days later, I got a letter from Mr. Gorski telling me that you don't belong to an sodium, you don't belong to a co-op. I can't buy from you. You, you have to cancel the order. At the same time, I'm talking with Mr. Molino, and I think you, Mr. Freeman yourself, I think I stated in the letter that there's a solution in the works while all this is happening. It was not supposed to be canceled, but yet I got a letter officially wanting to cancel. But I'm delivering the pads with the logos. I'm trying to say, no, I, I, you know, can you just receive it? And, and then the solution that I heard from, given the implication from Mr. Freeman as well as from Molino was that we're working on the second quote. We're working to get another quote because legally, we are supposed to go out to bid. I go, okay, then go get your bid and, you know, because, but as far as I'm concerned, the pad's here. I'm delivering it. Would your PO pleased? And I assume it was signed by a meeting like this at the time. There's four POs that amount to $169,000. Now, because of the cancellation, the return fee, the storage fee from the trucker, going back, I got wall pads that they cannot reuse because of the custom logos, the wall pads with custom logos, the engineering time that was spent, you know, because I came back many times, meeting with the athletic director many times, couple of the times with Mr. Senator Soma, to do site check, to make sure what engineer says, or any question they have, we have to coordinate. So, sadly, from my point of view, I earned my money. I'm in sales. I sold it. I'm just following through. And then the next thing I know is that, you know, Sam, sorry, cancel it. And I said, well, now I'm going to hit with this who's, so I feel like I did something. I didn't do anything, but yet I'm standing, holding the bag. I'm having big financial issues now because I'm asking my guys, okay, hold, let me talk to the school, see what the solution is. But at the same time, I'm having issue with my other business because of this. And you're not talking about $100 to, you're talking about $160,000 in total. I'm only here to appeal to your sense of fairness, what happened, how it happened. I can't explain why it happened. I did not lie to anyone saying I belong to an sodium, I can, you know? And then when I deal with other schools, if I, they have to go out to bid, it isn't my job. It's, it's whatever requirement you have to deal with. And then the sudden, you know, it wasn't even a discussion. I, I thought it was a discussion, there was solutions supposed to be in place. I have a text from Molino saying, we're working on it, Sam. Just give me time, leave me alone. I mean, I think I, it was stated, and I do have printouts and screenshots of the, the texts to kind of, so I'm not here to, I just really want you to see it from my point of view. I didn't do anything wrong, and I'm hit with $40,000 expenses that, it's big. I have three employees. I, anyway, that's my problem. I, I, so, I just want you guys to see, understand what happened. I don't think I'm a Mickey Mouse in this school because I, I know people knows me. I'm not, you know what I mean? I've done for 20 years now, up and down New Jersey with all the schools. I have to say, this is the first PO that got canceled. And I have no idea what happened and why it happened, and I can't imagine it happened that overnight like this unless something happened that I, I guess, I, I don't know what happened, other than something happened too late, and, but there's no solution, and I'm just here to see if there is, in your sense of fairness, as to like what happened, how it happened. Is it my fault? Do you have any kind? And then let's work together, just come up, because I'm not, I'm not here to fight. I, I tried to approach Mr. Freeman a few times. I know you never get a chance to talk, but I, I did ask, at least to see if there's a way to, to work out, or, you know? And that's why I'm here. And so...
So, first, let me just thank you. I know it takes a bit of courage to come out in front of the, the group here and inform us of things that maybe are a little bit uncomfortable, but without the information, we have no opportunity to engage, we have no opportunity to interact. So, let me start by saying thank you for coming out to the meeting tonight and sharing, you know, what's happened with us. Obviously, we're not in a position to give you immediate feedback on this particular issue, but we do commit to investigating with our administrators kind of what happened and discussing potential remedies so that we can find a solution that's really fair to everybody. Okay? So, I know that's not maybe the most satisfying possible answer, but rest assured, I'm pretty sure I can speak for just about everybody on the board here when we say we take your comments seriously. We're going to immediately look into it and, and find, you know, a fair solution.
And that's what I'm at least hopeful, that we can at least, I can see that side where the, you know, it, at least it's a process and not, not, anyway. And I, I appreciate that.
Well, again...
So, I just weigh in answer at some point?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I would suspect it's not going to take a significant amount of time, given that we have both our chief administrator and our board attorney here with us this evening, though I wouldn't expect a phone call tonight. I think within the next few days is a reasonable expectation.
I mean, any facts, I mean, facts not, he'll say, I have someone else, so in case you, you know, you need and, all right.
Understood. Well, again, thank you. I'm sorry that we've reached the point where we're at, but we're committed to working with you to resolve it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. And with that, we are on to item 13.1, which is resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education enter executive session as allowed by NJSA 10:4-11 for the purposes listed below, which include one and seven. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles, second. Thank you, Mr. Zupko. All in favor? Aye. We are currently adjourned to executive session.
Guys, do we need to reactivate the cameras? Are we good? We're good to... All right, everybody, we are back in session. We are up to item number 14.1.
There are none to move in 14.
There you go. So we're up to 15.1. Thank you, sir. So be resolved that the Bound Brook Board of Education approves the resolutions as outlined approval of HIV cases under middle and elementary schools, just number 15.2. I have a motion.
Motion.
I'm going to give the motion to Mr. Bowe and the second to Mr. Dawson. Mr. Gorski, when you're ready, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We're up to item 16.1. Be it resolved that we adjourn. A motion.
Motion.
Mr. Bowe, a second. Ms. Musson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.